Let's put that in the front of the line.
Okay. Well, I'll call each person if they want to have any amendments to the agenda. All right. Good morning. We could all be seated, please. I'd like to call this meeting to order. It is January 9th, 2019, 10:00 a.m. I would like to start the meeting with a comment. No disrespect to Ms. Gold, but I, or any other previous commissioners, I take our pledge of allegiance and all pledges of this nation very seriously. So I like to slow it down just a little bit, and it's a little bit more meaningful to me. So I would appreciate that. Join me, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right. Do we have any?
Have a couple items first, if I may, Mr. Chair.
Yes, go ahead, Mr. Boyce.
Any little patience here on this new seating arrangement, okay? It's kind of nice, but you remind me of my grade school principal, and I had a special chair right next to him, a good part of my career in grade school.
Did he have a ruler?
Yes. So today is National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. We lost in 2018 151 police officers in a 12-month period that were killed in the line of duty. Today, right now, we've lost about four for 2019, so we're hoping that number goes way down. So in a National Appreciation Day, the tradition is you offer to serve the local guys breakfast. I offered, but they heard about my cooking and they politely passed. So thank you very much. Thank you for letting me express that. National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day.
All right. Do we have any adoptions or amendments to the agenda? County Administrator?
I'd like to add a discussion for non-representative COLA staff wage increases for the non-representative staff. And if I could, I'd like to have that earlier, because I'd like the sheriff to be part of that discussion, and I don't want to spend his time here.
Okay. Can we do that as? Let me see, right after the awards?
I'd recommend right after the consent agenda, basically just doing it as the equivalent of, you know, 5A, and then the other one would be 5B or something like that, so.
That's fine. That's fine. So we're going to make that 5A then?
Yep.
And then Direction Labor Negotiations will be 5B?
Correct.
All right, any other amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So at the last meeting, we had an exec session for advice and counsel, and we're directed to proceed as discussed in the exec session. And on this meeting at Item K, there are two executive sessions. And I just wanted to check what the county administrator, the 13 was to talk about deliberations with labor negotiations. Were we going to need that executive session anymore?
No.
Mr. Schroeder? Okay, so we would eliminate number 13. And then number 14, I don't think we need to do number 14 either, but I would like to add two items. One, and I'll pass these around.
Is that for the executive session?
No, we're not doing the exec session, so we're eliminating the exec session.
None at all, the whole thing, okay.
And two items, one would be an emergency ordinance to repeal Ordinance 1701, and thereby eliminating the county administrator position. So that would be an item, and that would come up near the end. In other words, the idea is that Mr. Schroeder would run this meeting until you did a reading on that. Now, it's an emergency ordinance, and when it's an emergency ordinance, it can be adopted in a single reading effective on adoption if it's unanimous, but if not, like any of our ordinances, it needs two readings. So we'll just have to wait and see how the votes come out on that. This is only to add it to the agenda. It's not a vote on the item itself. And then as part of that would be approval of a termination agreement, excuse me, a separation agreement with the county administrator, which is, I think, did you get a copy of that with those handouts as well?
I don't think that was included.
Were we putting that on the agenda?
Yeah, the separation agreement was in the handout.
Good, you have a separation agreement there, and then here's the emergency ordinance one. So I think I've got them mixed up. So, right, so repealing would be first, and then the separation agreement would be second, because the separation agreement is based on a vote of repealing.
Do you have more of these?
Yes.
Thank you.
There we go.
So I just ask that those be added to the end of the agenda today.
So are you going to put that before presentations?
Yes.
No, it'd be at the end of the agenda.
Oh, very end, okay.
Yes.
And we're going to do that, how about we do it after updates?
Okay.
So why don't we make that as K?
Right, just not executive session.
Right, it's just not an executive session.
Okay.
All right, next we have, I'm sorry, are there any other adoptions or amendments to the agenda?
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Couple here. We have, oh gosh, is it Item? The TLT tax, I think it's Item 4 or 5. I'll have it right here. Anyway, I would like to postpone that until our 23rd meeting. Excuse, yes, 23rd meeting. I don't want anybody to interpret that, that I don't have full enthusiasm. I'm just not quite ready to enthusiastically recommend it to the voters. There is no urgency here, and I certainly support Curry Friends and the Fair Board. I'm just not ready on a couple minor things that I want clarified, and I just simply have not had the time, Mr. Chair, to really follow through. This is a huge thing for the county, so I'd like to table that or continue it until January 23rd. And then I have one other also.
What item is that? 7 and 8. You want both 7 and 8 eliminated or continued?
My agenda's not coming up here. Forgive me. Thank you. Yes, F7 and 8. Appreciate that.
Can we do that on the 16th instead of the 23rd?
That would give us a week. That's up to the board. I would rather have two weeks, but we're pretty loaded on the, you know, seven days from now, but I'm open to.
I would prefer sooner than later. Move things along, so if you'd be willing to go on the, to remove it for today and move it to the meeting on the 16th, I would be more in favor of that. That's cool?
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Fine here.
Yeah, I will, Chair, I will say your time is still fine. In order to approve and get it on the ballot, I think my initial, I think my initial drop deadline to have the ballot language submitted would be the 20th of February, if I count my dates correct.
It's, I think it's the first Tuesday in March, but I could be incorrect also.
Which for me, I just kind of, in my mind, I would have you finish this by the 20th of February, so you have time built in in case there's questions on the balloting initiative. So you do have time to do that. It won't affect it.
Thank you.
So this is for the second reading, okay, and the implementing as well. All right.
One more, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Thank you. I need to be reappointed as delegate to both AOC and AOC Board of Directors. The AOCC, BLN Counties, that's a board of only 12, representing 18 counties. It's a very important spot for the county. I actually serve on eight different boards, but like I say, this is probably number one, and this is what helped us get that 1.7 million in PILT a few months ago. And I put it as my highest priority. I just need a kind of official written document from the board that I am that delegate, that I do serve on the board now.
I don't have a problem with that.
And I actually just got the call yesterday that they need that updated, so I would have had it on the agenda had I had it a few days ago.
I have no problem with it either.
Thank you.
Thanks for your doing it. All righty. Next we have public comments.
Did you want a motion to approve the agenda?
Yeah, I'm sorry.
So we need, is that, I think consensus? Consensus, fine.
Well, but there were other amendments there. I make a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
I have a second?
Yes. Second, thank you.
Any further comments? The question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, next we have public comments. First is Lucy Labonte.
Good morning, Commissioner Lucy Labonte, 98645 Agnes Road, for the record. And I'm going to read the League of Women Voters' Position, adopted in 1999, and how we govern ourselves in Curry County, and it was reviewed after the last Home Rule ballot measure and upheld. The members did not want to change it. I also wanted just to say I'm sorry that you removed the transient logic tax second reading. I understand the emergency ordinance concern, but the second, there were people here wanting to testify on that today on this stormy day, so I'm sorry the second reading was removed. It could have been read, and the comments could have been taken. Oh, and one more little thing before I start with my league hat on. I noticed that Oregon Coastal Zone Management Association membership is on the agenda. I encourage you to join that group. I didn't know they were still functioning, but I was chair of that for a while, and I noticed it was on the Soil/Water Conservation District Radar 2. It has all the ports, counties, some of the cities, and some of the Soil/Water Conservation Districts on the coast, and they all meet. They used to meet quarterly and discuss coastal issues, and it was a very important group for getting our ports funding and dredged. So I really do encourage you to look very seriously at joining that group. Okay, back to the League of Women Voters. I'm the president of the League of Women Voters of Curry County, and the League of Women Voters of Curry County supports a county government led by three duly elected commissioners who follow state laws on budget and county rules on personnel evaluation. Alternative sources of funding should be explored. Efforts should be made to streamline advisory bodies as to function, membership, and training. The League of Women Voters of Curry County believes that the Board of Commissioners and all appointed powers should follow the adopted personnel rules and report to people that evaluation has been completed. A program evaluation procedure should be, excuse me, adopted and implemented on an annual basis. We recommend that the chair of the Board of Commissioners shall make a state-of-the-county report to the people at the beginning of each calendar year. The League of Women Voters of Curry County stresses the importance of adherence to state balanced budget law. County fees and services should reflect the true cost. The League of Women Voters of Curry County supports combining advisory bodies with similar focus, actively recruiting members, and providing training for them. The League of Women Voters of Curry County believes all elected county officials should be nonpartisan. And I wanted, I wanted to just take note when I was reading this this morning. I went over your agenda, and you don't have a state-of-the-county address today.
Actually, we did last time.
Oh, you did it in December?
Two days ago.
Oh, two days ago, okay, because I looked on that agenda, and I didn't see it either.
It was there.
Okay, good. I'm glad you did it. It's usually the outgoing commissioner that does it.
Right.
It was started by Commissioner Hanscom, I believe, years and years ago, and I know that during the Olds-Roberts years, it was dropped, so I'm happy that you're still doing it. Thank you.
Thank you. David Barnes.
Thank you. If you don't mind, I'd rather speak later when you repeal 1701.
That'll be fine. All right, next we're going to go to D on the agenda, which is awards. The first one we have scheduled is a five-year service award for Mr. Gary Carter.
Morning, Mr. Chair and Commissioners. Richard Christensen, Curry County Roadmaster, here with our five-year service award recipient, Gary Carter. Just wanted to introduce him. He's one of our top operators. He responds all hours of the night, all weather, storms, no matter how bad it is. He's one of the first people to arrive on the job site into the facility. Also, he takes great pleasure in training our new employees with CDL licenses, and he's a big part of our team. But I just want to introduce you to him and give him his five-year service award.
I just want to. I just want to let you know that I happen to know Mr. Carter rather well, and his service of the county is very, very admirable, and it is my honor to call him my friend.
Thank you, Gary.
Next, we have a 30-year service award for Sergeant Hensley.
20.
A 20-year, I'm sorry.
You've been here longer than I have.
I've got to put the glasses back on, all right. 20.
We're going to live long enough to see 30 years.
Still got hair of 30 years, that's good.
Morning, Commissioners. Sheriff John Ward. We are here today to recognize Joel for his 20 years of service with the Curry County. Joel started out, I can't believe it's 20 years already, as a corrections deputy, and then moved into patrol. During his patrol stint, he became a detective for about three years. And then when I took over as sheriff in 2014, I saw the value in Joel a lot more than just as a patrol deputy. I made him in charge of our jail, made him the jail commander, and boosted him up to sergeant. I'd boost him up a little bit more today, but we have an issue with compression issues I got to deal with first. I also want to recognize his wife, Katie, in the audience, is here to support and put up with all of Joel's shenanigans for the last 20 years. And so I appreciate that. Joel's very valuable to us. He takes on additional projects that it's, could be overwhelming for most. Recently, he's working with the City of Brickings and the Portland State University for dispatch consolidation, to see, you know, where we go from here. But the biggest thing is working on the tower projects, signing for the towers to deal with the, not so much the towers, but the microwaves and the equipment that we have on those towers. Working very closely with the wireless, making sure that, you know, we get our communications up and running again as soon as possible. So I couldn't be more prouder to call him my sergeant and my friend, so, Joel?
Hey, hey!
I don't want to hold you in overtime.
I know.
Better get her in the picture.
Thank you for your service, Joel.
Thank you.
And he's got a speech?
I do. I wrote a four-pager, but I'll save it for later. In all honesty, I'd like to thank Curry County for taking a risk on a 23-year-old in 1998 December, a young family at that time. I really appreciate Sheriff Ward and everything he's done for me. He's allowed me opportunities to supervise actual multiple divisions, dispatch as well, and hopefully get us on a path that we're excited to be on. A lot of positive energy going on right now at the sheriff's office. We're doing a lot with a little. But all I would really want to recognize, Katie Hensley, my wife, because, well, without her, I would have no hair. I'd be on so many blood pressure meds, it'd be unbelievable, and I probably honestly couldn't do this job. The law enforcement in itself is an enigma. A lot of people don't understand. She's changed with me. She's allowed me to go leave all those hours of night, get the phone calls in the middle of the night, make you wonder why we do this. But she stood by me the entire time, so I'd like to thank my wife.
Thanks, Joel.
I'd also like to say, as I've said many times publicly, I can't understand everything that you go through being a sheriff, but I am very much pro-military, fire, and law enforcement. And to see you guys, I've always said, running into a building that people is burning or people are shooting at, we're all running out and you guys are running in. We do appreciate your service, sir. All right, let's move on to the consent agenda. The first item is number three for the chip rock purchase.
Mr. Chair, I think we just need to approve the entire consent agenda.
We just did, didn't we?
No.
You approved amendments to the agenda. Basically, you entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda if any items are removed.
I move that we approve the consent agenda as written with Items 3 and 4.
Yes. Louise, go ahead.
Louise Colstrom, county accountant. I just wanted to make a quick comment about the proposed budget calendar. I just want to make sure before we adopt it that there's no conflicts on any of these dates for anybody, and I just don't want to change it again after we adopt it, so.
Can we wait till the 16th? I need to look at my calendar more closely. Is that going to be a problem?
No, I'm going to be continuing on as if it's already adopted.
Yeah, go ahead and continue, but there may be a conflict for me. I'm not sure.
I just have to check. So do you want to remove it from the consent agenda for this time?
Can we do it for now?
Okay.
Would that be, I didn't even think of that.
Then we'll put it on again on the 16th there.
Yeah, I didn't get home till late last night and forgot all about looking at my calendar.
Okay.
I apologize.
Where was that one?
Okay, so that would be with the removal of, I'm going to change my motion to approve the consent agenda with just Item 3 only, which would be the chip rock purchase.
Okay, got you.
And then we will postpone the other proposed budget calendar until the 16th.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? The question?
Aye.
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 Good job, Roadmaster.
Thank you very much.
Public partner, our public-private partnership. Very nice.
All right, then we're going to move on to the regular agenda. Direction on labor negotiation with Union 206, Mr. Schroeder?
Actually, Chair, I would like to go to the non-rep wage adjustment that we added to the agenda as Agenda Item 5A.
You are correct. I'm sorry. On law enforcement, sorry.
You do agree.
All right, how do you get that?
Exit, yeah, exit out top right.
Okay, Clark Schroeder, county administrator. We're basically at the point where we've had two unions settle in our county this past few months. We've had the Teamsters have settled for 2.75% plus a language in the contract, and the SEI union settled for 2.13% plus a health insurance also. And we've come to the point now where union employees are earning more than their supervisors in the sheriff's department. This is called compression. If a sheriff is, if the sergeant is promoted to lieutenant, they would have to take a pay cut. This will likely happen in other departments as we go forward if we don't adjust this. County administrators recommend a 2.5% increase for non-representative employees and $100 a month county increase in health insurance contribution, which is in line with the union settlements. My recommendation would be the effective date would be yesterday, January 8th, which would be the start of a new payroll period. The unions, as you're well aware, we retroactively went back to July 1st, but since these individuals and the non-reps are not in the union, we haven't, we didn't start negotiations at that time. My recommendation would be to do it on the 8th. So in the handouts today, and I gave all you handouts yesterday, so you had time to review them and look at them. I will just put them up here just for the audience, just to have a brief view of them. We have the master payroll, which is enacted by the Budget Committee this past summer, and the effects of both the recommendations on a yearly basis. So when we're looking at the master payroll sheets on the spreadsheets coming up here momentarily, you'll notice the amounts are on a yearly basis. I will state that the master payroll is not updated every time an employee is hired, leaves, transfers, or promoted. It's a static worksheet that's adopted by the Budget Committee. And so when you look on the master payroll, you'll see individuals who are no longer here or have changed positions. And the reason that is is because the payroll actually sits inside of our accounting system, and so that's where it resides. So the numbers that you see are kind of the, more of the general effects as if you were enacting it from the previous, the Budget Committee recommendation. So I went, we went back, and actually Julie Swift, Julie Swift had put this together. And so these are, we have these non-reps, Teamsters, SEI. Farther on the page, which the audience can't see, is the road department, and then elected officials. The reason the road department, going forward, the road department will be separated because they'll be in the 206 union, which we're going to be talking about next concerning the negotiations on that. The reason the road department is broken out separate, and correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Swift, is that in the past, they did get what the Teamsters got for a few years without being part of the 223 Teamsters, I shall correct that, without being part of the union, and then the, somewhere along the lines, they dropped out of it. So they have a slightly different path as far as historical COLAs. So with that, we basically go back to 2009, and you can see we have COLAs and STEPS, and then 2010, 11, we got 1112. We got, you know, coming forward, you can see over the course of, you know, this nine-year period, there really hasn't been an awful lot of parity. And when you look at the unions, you, you know, I would encourage you, the reason we're here is you'll look across these two lines, and you can see 1819 increase. Here, we had STEPS increases, which are 5% or 2.5%. Here, the Sheriff's Union got some, so. So with that. So with that, I have a multi-tab spreadsheet here. This is going to be hard to see the multi-tab spreadsheet. Have you done this before, Julie? Okay, all right. Yeah, it's, it's hard to see. Going from the paper copies, basically, you have, you have the payroll as is, as it was adopted by the Budget Committee, at 1.854 million dollars for this group of employees. If we add the 2.5% increase for the COLA, it's a $38,933 increase on an annual basis. That would be, so half of that would be the equivalent of basically half. So it'd be at, you know, and then the third page in your packet, you basically have the $100 increase in county contribution to health insurance, which is $64,000 over the course of a year. So, and that's the total cost, so you can see that title of that page is Wage Increase Plus Insurance Increase. It's $64,133. It would basically be about half of that. So the recommendation would be that this would be about a $32,000 adjustment to this year's budget.
Because that's half a year, is what you're saying?
That's correct, yes. And what, what we're doing with these union increases, and we're waiting till we settle the 206 union. We will, Ms. Colstrom will do a supplemental budget to basically, they'll move money into the wage categories for these different departments because the Budget Committee did not, did not budget for any increases for any of the unions. And so this will just be in line. We're going to wait till we get done with that. Originally, I was going to wait until the 206 union negotiations were completed. But given the fact that we've run across this wage compression issue, I feel it's untenable to continue with this operation. And so I basically am recommending that you adopt this per the administrator's recommendation. And then we'll continue to negotiate the 206 union. But chances are, when you see the pattern of what the non-reps and the other unions have got, I don't think we're tipping our hands, so to speak, in any fashion. They'll be detrimental to the county negotiations. So with that, I'd, I'd, I'd direct the council to move to adjust non-rep wages 2.5% and increase county insurance contribution to, by $100 effective January 8th.
Just have one comment. Julie Swift, payroll and HR. One of the things that's been happening over the last several years is we've had to hire non-represented employees outside of the salary range that the position is set in. Had these increases been, COLAs been given over the years, we wouldn't be running into that issue. So for instance, a building official is normally set at a range 11. Had there been increases on that range 11 over the years, we wouldn't have had to put him at a range 14 to get the money that was required for the position. So that's, that's part of what's happening with this non-rep, no COLA, is we're running into having to hire people outside of the salary range that the position is set in.
So I'm looking for a motion.
All right, I'll make, I'll make a motion to, to adopt the the budget increases for the, as stated by County Administrator Schroder. I think it was $33,000 and...
$32. I'll second that.
Any further question or comments? A question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we'll go to 5B now. Now that I'm back online, direct, direction on labor negotiation for Union 206, Mr. Schroder.
Okay. Curry County, as I just reiterated earlier, Curry County has been in negotiations with the Teamsters 206 Union, which is the road crew. Attorney Bruce Bischoff was the lead negotiator, along with myself and John Huddle, as sitting in that second chair with the negotiations for the previous union contracts. Mr. Bischoff no longer is engaged with Curry County. And the question before the board today, should the county engage a union negotiation attorney or have staff finish the talks without an attorney? We have been working, just for a status update, the 206 union, we basically have been working on the language of the contract. And I would say we're 90% of the way there as far as the, the working language. But we have not done any of the financial part. So that needs to still be negotiated. And one of the options for the county board to consider would be to, which I made a recommendation back in June, actually, when I got here, was to engage Pierre Robert from LGPI, which would be able to help and support the county with negotiations. He earns, he bills out at $190 an hour plus expenses. His expenses are $95 an hour for travel and actual hotels or whatever. If Mr. Robert was brought on board, I, it would be my recommendation that staff would be part of the negotiating team. I would recommend that you would have Council Huddle, Colstrom, and Swift in, in with Robert. In my conversations with the representative from 206 yesterday, he is looking to try to schedule a one- or two-day negotiating session onsite here sometime within the next 30 days. Again, this is a union that, you know, was voted into existence for Curry County April, March, somewhere in there. And so the, the effects of this are going to go back to July 1. And the longer we postpone this, the longer it's going to be a problem. And in addition, I think it's important for the county board to weigh in because we did receive notice also from the SEIU union. We got this last month. In, in accordance with Article 28, Terms of Agreement, Collective Bargaining between Curry County SEI Union 503, we are giving notice of our intent to reopen midterm negotiations of Articles 19 and 21. And so you might remember, we just settled the SEI union in, I don't know, August, somewhere in there. And the Articles 19 and 21 would be basically, you know, the equivalent of wages and/or healthcare. And it would be the recommend, my recommendation that you enter in negotiations with the same negotiating team that you're going to be doing the 206, giving staff direction to do this. And you start negotiating with SEIU because I would prefer to have you go into the budget cycle, knowing what your wages are going to be for starting in July. Because it's kind of put staff and the financial situation in the county not having those in place, and now we're having to go backwards. So I, I would recommend that we go forward with SEIU negotiations also. Questions, Ms. Gold?
I have a couple of questions. Number one, where is this legal counsel located? Where does he live?
LGPI, I think, is out of Salem.
Out of Salem.
Yes.
And question number two, would it be possible to do both unions at the same time so you don't have to pay for the travel time?
It might be hard to do that, just because the, the 206 union might be a little more complicated because it's a brand-new contract. And, you know, the union, Corey Finnegan, I think is that guy's name, he basically has said he wants two full days to do this. He would rather get two full days and just knock it out. Your question is, would you have other staff? Because the SEIU staff that's going to be coming down to negotiate, they're from Otter Town also. They're from Medford, so they have to come here and stay also, so.
I don't know. I mean, if you were able to get, say, three days, bam, 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 do it. So that you're not paying all the travel time. Because that adds up.
Well, well, I guess part of that, part of that, you know, Commissioner Gold would be is, is if the board wants to have a, you know, a negotiator, union negotiator on staff to come with us. So that, that's your main question right now. So that, you know, we, the strategies we can talk about, we will enter into executive session at some point with your, with your negotiation teams to talk about your strategies. This is basically what, what is your team going to consist of?
Right.
And so that, I want, I would like some discussion and, on that.
Briefly, do we have the resources here to do it in-house? I mean, is it? Do we have the staffing to do, to do negotiations in-house rather than hiring an outside firm?
I, I believe we do. I guess I would ask maybe Mr. Huddle to weigh in on that.
Council Huddle?
Thank you. And I've just heard anecdotally before my time, and Julie Swift, actually, I'd like to bring her up to the podium. But my understanding is that we had a commissioner, county council, the head of the department, who's, was primarily affected, as well as the personnel officer. But maybe you could tell us how we've done this in the past?
We've done it both ways.
Okay.
We've had, we've used outside labor negotiators as well as just doing our own team. The outside negotiator is basically to be the lead voice on the team. And then we would have, we had my position, counsel, usually a department head. In the past, we did have a commissioner, although it's been recommended not to have a commissioner on the team because they are ultimately approving the contract. So, you know, we've done it both ways. We've had LGPI representatives. We've had a representative from Oregon School Boards Association be our representative. We had Mark Wolfe from Local Government Law Group a couple of years ago. So it's, it's really up to the board how you want to do it. I think we have the ability to, to do it without, but it's also when you have an expert doing it or helping you out, really, I think it makes a difference.
Well, is there a way we could put them possibly on a retainer, that if we have a question, we could call and ask?
Well, we can always consult with LGPI because we are members of that group already.
So there we go.
So.
Commissioner Boyce?
Local Government Personnel Institute, which now is actually under the League of Oregon Cities. It was a group, a group formed by AOC and LOC, and there's been some upheaval in the structure lately. So right now it's under just LOC.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm glad Mr. Schroder asked Council Huddle. And I may have a specific question here in a minute. I've spent a little time on the phone with Mr. Robert. And he's very well-respected around the state. He's reasonable. He is very experienced. And I'm hoping we don't need him on a real steady basis for 2019, but I, I sense that we probably are going to need him. So I'd like a chance to get to know him a little better, all of us, as far as that goes. And I'm not saying we can't do in-house. And I didn't catch Mr. Huddle's answer on that fully, but just very interested in what your approach might be. And another thing about Mr. Pierre, he doesn't have any connections with any of us, I presume, as commissioners, which was a past issue. So, Mr. Huddle, I would like to just defer to you again, if, if you want a more specific question, I can do that.
So I asked Julie Swift up here for how it was done, where she came from, or, you know, how it was done here in the past, excuse me. And she mentioned it's been a bunch of different ways. I'm used to having staff do it. And then if we get into a particular loggerheads or, you know, sticky issue, you dial up your outside legal counsel, like a Pierre Robert, and, you know, have them on an ad hoc basis, but not have them be on every single item in, in every meeting. So I'm used to a culture where the staff did it. We did not have elected officials involved. The interesting part there is, we were actually criticized by one of our unions for not having elected official involved. So there's, it's almost like you can't win sometimes. But, but what I'm used to is staff does it, and they, the only time the elected officials are involved is in the exec session where they're providing the policy directions to the negotiating team, once the team's established. But I'm, I'm comfortable with staff teams doing it and then consulting with outside counsel on an as-needed basis.
Commissioner Gold?
I'm going to have to agree with not having a commissioner on the bargaining team because it really does color your vote when it, when it comes down to it. Because I was part of the bargaining team and, yeah, totally agree with that.
Commissioner Boyce?
So as I stated, I'd like a chance to get to know him a little bit better and see how that might prepare us, yeah, for 2019. So I'm ready to make a motion just to direct staff to go ahead and, and have him come down to finish the negotiations, or at least be a part of it. And $185 an hour, that's half what we were paying Bischoff. So I think that it's a rough call, tough call, but I think that's our, that certainly would be my preference. So that's my motion.
Are you looking for a motion today, or did you want to go through executive session to do that?
No, I'm, so on your AGRS, I have, I have your couple motions. One motion, move to direct staff to finish negotiations without outside attorney. Or two, move to direct staff to work with Pierre Robert from LGPI to finish negotiations. And I guess you could probably break that into two separate, you know, listening to the discussion, I guess I would correct my motion to say, move to direct staff to work with Pierre Robert on an odd, on an ad-needed basis to finish the negotiations. So basically have him on retainer, you know, and like Council Huddle had said, we get to a loggerhead, we get something we can't get through, we call the guy up. Or we dial in, just like you dialed in Bruce to executive sessions, you basically, maybe your first executive session, you basically have Pierre call in and staff. You guys meet together and kind of give direction. So that, logistics-wise, your next step is going to be, you're going to schedule an executive session. And you're going to, you're going to give guidance to your negotiating team. And then we, your negotiating team is going to schedule with the, you know, Corey Finnegan from the 206 union. And they're going to physically be here to do this type of work. But staff need guidance to say, what, what kind of leeway are you going to give them to do this?
We're not looking for that guidance today.
No, we're not. No, no, no. I, I'm talking about logistics. So logistics of this is you basically would, you know, I would recommend that you make a motion to direct staff to work with Pierre Robert on an ad-needed basis and start the negotiating process. That basically would mean we will, if, once that motion is done and passed, we will put on the schedule on an executive session to meet with you and with Pierre on the phone to say, here's where we're at, and we'll package all this stuff up. And I will hand, I will hand my information off today. By the end of today, I'll hand it off to Huddle and to Ms. Swift to make sure they have all the information that I have concerning the 206 and along with the SEIU union.
Mr. Boyce?
Thank you again. As I said, I spent time with him on the phone, so I'm not really inclined to change my motion. I'd like to have him come down and help finish the negotiations. And that hopefully, again, would set us up for down-the-road negotiations.
So you want a motion to bring him, bring Mr. Bischoff down?
Not Bishop.
I'm not Bishop, I'm certain. Robert, Robert.
Robert.
Down, down now to deal with this? Do I have a second? For lack of a second, the motion dies.
I so moved to bring Robert Pierre, or whatever his last name is, down as, as an ad-needed basis. We can phone in and get the necessary advice that we need.
And have a county staff?
Have county staff take care of the negotiations.
Do I have a second? I'll make a second. Any further discussion? I'd like to say I, I agree with Mr. Boyce that we need to have a relationship with Mr. Robert. And I think it's, it's time, it's, it's best to take small steps. To have him come in as needed on this, for me, is, is a good way to start it. I, I agree with Council Huddle that our staff should be the first people that we delegate to look into this and move it forward. And again, relying on your comments and his expertise, we can call him and bring him in as needed. Any further comments? A question?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
All right, next, next item on the agenda is department head meeting, commissioner's schedule. Mr. Schroder?
Curry County has department head meetings the second Tuesday of each month with possible fourth Tuesday meeting if needed. We have had a rotating schedule. Commissioners attend these meetings, as no two commissioners can attend at the same time due to open meeting violations. With that in your packet, you will see the proposed schedule, which obviously can be switched around if people are on vacation or they're not going to be here for a month or whatever. But this is a proposed schedule. And the next meeting, I, we would have had a meeting yesterday on the 8th. I canceled that department head meeting due to the uncertainty of the administrator's position. So the next meeting for the department heads will be on January 22nd with, with Chair, or with Commissioner Gold in attendance. With that, I would seek a motion to adopt commissioner's schedule for department head meetings.
Mr. Boyce?
Yeah, there's not any need. And again, it's a wrong read. I want the public to know where we are in the open public meeting laws. Once again, you know, it seems complicated, but it really isn't. I've got to know so many commissioners around the state, and they, nobody interprets that open public meetings law as does Curry County, or at least part of Curry County. And that is the silly notion that you can't be under the same roof at the same time outside of a board meeting. Nobody else operates that way. It's horribly impractical. It's, it's, it's almost to the point of being silly. So there's benefit to that. And I just want the public to know that by us being on our honor, any two commissioners, any public officials for that matter, it is, it is really simple. You serve with integrity. You serve with integrity, and you fulfill your obligation, and you just don't discuss business. You just don't. And that's the way the other commissioners operate.
Ms. Gold?
I'd just like to ask Council Huddle, what are your feelings on this matter? Probably more than feelings, what's legal, what's not legal?
Well, thank you. And Commissioner Boyce summarized the, you know, the position of Curry County, that any two commissioners under the same roof is a meeting, and that's really not my position. So I don't know where that position is coming from. But essentially, it's when two commissioners deliberate or gather information towards county business. And my experience is the information that's discussed in the department head meetings is county business. A lot of times it's going over agenda items or talking about items that would go on an agenda. So I believe there is a risk that two commissioners at a department head meeting could be considered as obtaining information or deliberating on information that constitutes county business. And so I urge caution in having more than one commissioner at that kind of a meeting at the same time. So I would, I think it creates a lot of issues and a lot of ability for people to accuse us of wrongdoing, and I prefer to stay out of that kind of position.
You say, if I may? You say it creates a lot of issues?
It creates one large issue of alleged violation of the public meetings law that I think people could easily accuse us of wrongdoing, and I don't like my board to be accused of wrongdoing, so.
Could I ask you to expound on that a little bit?
Okay, well, I'll try to say it again. The Oregon Public Meetings Law.
Oh, I know the law.
Requires a, requires a notice of a meeting and an opportunity for the public to attend, and you have to have it accessible, and you have to take minutes and do all these things that we're doing here in this meeting. And the law defines a public meeting as a quorum, which unfortunately for us, because we're so small, means two commissioners who are gathered together to obtain information, like a workshop, for county business. And again, not every item, Commissioner Boyce is right in some ways, not every item that we do in the department head meetings would constitute board action or county business. But very often, we're talking about items, sometimes we even go over the agenda and say, and ask people what they have for the agenda. So very often, the department head meetings are talking about county business. So if two commissioners are in there obtaining information about county business and participating and deliberating on those items, then there's a very easy argument to make by connecting to dots that that is a public meeting, and then we need minutes and notice and public attendance and those kind of things. So I'm, I also, you know, I've been doing this for decades and.
You're that old?
Not, notwithstanding, notwithstanding Commissioner Boyce's representation of what other counties do. And by the way, I go to all of the meetings with all the other county councils when we have these annual conferences, and they're, my understanding is they're of the same opinion as me, and even the Lane County case, where the commissioners didn't even have a quorum in the same room. They felt that there was a court of pine that could still be sharing of information serially, could be a violation of the meetings law. So again, I'm just urging caution, I advise against it. I think it opens us up to criticism and attack, and I, I don't want my board to have that happen to them. That's why I'm advising against it.
Ms. Gold, Commissioner Gold, I'm sorry.
I really feel that we need to follow Council's advice. That's what he's here for, and he's here to protect us. So I would like to make a motion that we accept the schedule as written, with the exception that people can change places in case they can't be there.
I'll second that for further discussion. County Administrator, is this something that you normally attend?
Yes, in the, in my seven-month tenure, I would lead the discussion, I'd put on an agenda. I would seek, I'd put an agenda out a few days ahead of time for the department heads, and they could add things to the agenda. I would coordinate the meeting and manage the meeting.
And is a commissioner there with you at that time?
And then there's commissioner, that commissioner would be attending one of the meetings, attend that department head meeting. And I think, I think it's a very useful meeting. I would hate to have the meeting go away, you know. I mean, one, one of the remedies that we had, and Mr. Pash, you may weren't aware of this, we kind of struggled with this issue this past fall. One of the remedies, you know, that Council Huddle had recommended, was that if two commissioners do show up for a meeting, the meeting just becomes canceled in order to stop a violation. And that was one of the remedies.
Commissioner Gold?
And I have one more question. Would this become a public meeting if two commissioners were to attend? And once it becomes public, that means you have to notice it, you have to keep minutes. Is that, did I understand that correctly, Council Huddle?
Right, like I said, the public meetings law has all those requirements once you have a public meeting, and it broadly defines a public meeting as two commissioners, you know, gathering information or deliberating on items of county business. And so it's unfortunate that we, that a quorum is just two commissioners, but that's really, it's not that complicated. And by the way, before we had a county administrator, these department head meetings were essentially chaired or run by the county council. And for the longest, and at that time, there had always been the serial attendance, taking turns by one commissioner. So it's consistent with the past practice and the past practice of the past county council, that we not have a quorum of commissioners in the same room talking about all this stuff at the same time. So I'm, I'm, I struggle with departing from taking turns. I don't understand the problem with that, but that's, you have one commissioner who has, and I don't know, Commissioner Pash, maybe you have some also?
Well, my, my next question to you is, I would be leaning toward rotating commissioners so that each meeting a different commissioner attends that, that department head meeting. And I think that's, that's wise, because then you get fresh choices, you get a fresh mind on different issues.
It's what we've done since, you know, before I was here, under Jerry Herbage's tutelage, as it were. So I just, what Commissioner Boyce is proposing is a departure from what we've been doing for a long time. It's also not my understanding of how the public meetings laws work, so.
Commissioner Gold?
I have one more comment. When all of this uproar happened, I guess it was several months ago, I had heard that some of the department heads were uncomfortable with having the public there or whatever, so they would have a hard time speaking freely about their issues. So that's what I had heard. I, I think that's another issue also that we need to take account for.
Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you again, Mr. Chair. Small county, our job is to collect as much information as we can. Four words, there is no deliberation. There cannot be any deliberation. So to go to a meeting unless we could amend the motion to have the commissioner responsibly report back to the board so we can be updated on issues and concerns from the department heads, being able to go one out of every three meetings doesn't build a base for solving problems, in my view. Bicker County, maybe, but I'm going to stress, there cannot be any deliberation because you're sitting there listening and learning and supporting. Thank you.
Commissioner Gold?
So if there were a report back at one of these commission meetings on what happened at the department meetings, would you be comfortable with having a schedule?
Was that a question to me? I'm sorry.
You're the one that's not wanting a schedule.
I did say I didn't want a schedule.
Oh, okay, I'm not here for a fight.
I'm, I'm very much in support of having staff meetings on a general basis, department manager meetings. That kind of connection can be very productive with the issues, and I, since we're spending plenty of time on this, I'm, I'm going to stand down. I would rather be able to attend and listen intently and do my job. But if that's impossible, and the board is not in agreement with that, then I'll support the motion as stated, Mr. Chair.
Well, I'd like to say, as I've spoken publicly about, I don't understand how this quorum rule is. It's a part of our, of our government, and we have to deal with it. I can't imagine not being able to speak with your business partners on a county and speak about strategies and that over a cup of coffee without having a public meeting. So those are my opinions. I guess my question, and I think it was Commissioner Gold's question, was if we can have a report drawn, which I think is prudent to the other commissioners and the board as the results and questions from those meetings, would you be willing to?
Certainly, I think that would be very helpful.
All right, so Commissioner Gold, are you willing to amend your motion?
That's fine. I don't have a problem with that.
Okay, so would you please restate your motion?
I make a motion that we accept the schedule as written, with the understanding that there will be a report back from whoever the commissioner is regarding the issues that took place.
Do I have a second?
Second?
Any further comments?
Just want to make sure we don't put any department heads or people that give testimony in those meetings at a tough position, if they are, if any of it is protected or concerned. I presume that's not, should not be an issue. Thank you.
We'll keep on top of it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? A question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, let me see. We're skipping seven and eight, so next would be presentations, and that would be AOC Road Fund Invoice Discussion.
Okay. The next two items, basically, I put on our presentations because you're, if action is taken, you're going to be directing staff to come back to you with a supplemental budget. So the reason you're not actually voting and approving the next two items is because the money's, we're out of money, and so we have to approve more money, and I don't want to waste the money on a supplemental budget if we're not going in that direction. So the first item before you is a AOC Special Assessment for Road Funds. So a few years, AOC was commingling funds for both general funds and funds that were dedicated but utilized only on road-related advocacy and lobbying. This resulted in a shortfall of funds in the road fund from AOC, so not confused with the county road fund. This is the AOC road fund, and they went in the hole $913,000. The AOC Board voted to send a special assessment to counties for funds which were utilized for general lobbying. The general decision for the county board is, the general question for the county board is, should the county pay for the services that are received from AOC for the years that the road fund money was used for general support of AOC and its activities over that timeframe? AOC is allowing counties to pay their proportional assessments over a 10-year period if needed. Supplemental budget would be needed for this assessment in addition to the AOC dues, which is the next item on the agenda. So we have, this will be the first item, and it'll be tied into the AOC dues. So this is a standalone item. And here's your, here's basically the assessment here of $9,800. We are, you know, when you look at the packet here, this packet is 70 pages long, and so within this packet are basically some of the history concerning, well, how did they get here? You know, there was some concern of maybe mismanagement, a lack of oversight, other types of accusations have been made. They address this within this packet, it's online for all the citizens to read, and our county at $9,800 is fairly small compared to some counties that are paying $100,000. The, there was a discussion this past summer and fall concerning how the special assessments would be allocated, and they basically ended up on allocating them based on the percentage of the dues that currently are supported, which has to do with population and area and other, other areas. So this is basically just the proportional of that $913,000, this is our portion of this. And the county board can decide if they want to pay it, or do they want to pay it on a 10-year basis or a three-year basis, or not pay it at all, is my understanding. I will say that one county, Jefferson County, who is no longer a dues-paying member of AOC, they are paying five-sevenths of their particular bill because they got benefit for, they were members for five of those seven years where this misallocation and commingling of funds was, and they felt there was an ethical obligation to pay for five-sevenths of that bill because they were members at that point.
Do you know if they put, if AOC put the other two sevenths of that burden on the rest or not?
I'm not aware what they did with that.
They put that back into the fund and redivide it?
I, I, I think what they're looking for is direction from all the 36 counties and find out where they're going to land. They might have to adjust their budget if some counties don't want to do this. When I've met with the other county administrators, they basically, everybody kind of wanted to get this off the plate. They wanted to get this done and paid for in January, February, so that AOC can go forward and have a legitimate working plan to go forward.
That, I guess that was my question, though, is if counties refuse to pay, are they putting that portion back into it and redividing it and penalizing the counties that are willing to pay?
I don't think so. I think you're going to have to make operational changes, or they're going to do something else.
And was this from mismanagement, you think?
I'm not going to weigh in on that. I think it was a commingling of funds, you know, where you have, you know, two different things, and you're supposed to separate out activities, and all of a sudden it gets dumped in the same bucket. The executive director did resign, and they have an interim one, and they had a new audit. So there, this 70-page details exactly how they're addressing this issue.
I think Commissioner Boyce was first.
Thank you. This has been a grueling thing, and it, we watched what was a very good person leave the whole organization. And sitting on the board, this, by the way, I was appointed after this was discovered. So most of the bigger counties have already paid. What's really, I think, the biggest issue for the smaller counties here is that this is where we get our CIS insurance. Should AOC ever go down, many rural counties would be faced with the task of trying to get insurance independently on their own, liability and all that goes with that. And then what they do in the legislature is especially good for rural counties, as I'm sure you know. So us being able to support them is, from my perspective, something as simple, but equally very important county college, the benefit that is to the commissioners. Can't stress that enough. And as Mr. Schroeder said, we have 10 years to pay that if we need to do that. And so it is a bittersweet sort of thing, but we do need to support AOC, the decisions and the, I almost want to say the retrofit that they have done and are doing to make sure this doesn't have it happen again, the double audits. It's, I've got a lot of confidence that, especially new people that are, that are on the board, above my pay scale, are going to fix this, and we won't be dealing with this again. We need to send them into this full session coming up February 1st with a lot of support. So I don't know where we're going to come up with the money, but yes, Mr. Chair, if we can spread that over even five years, I think that would be very, very beneficial to our county. Thank you.
Ms. Gold, Commissioner Gold?
I have a numbers question. What percent interest rate would we have to pay if we spread it over 10 years, three years, or did they even get into that?
They didn't get into that. It's just take your $9,800 and divide it over the amount of years you want to spend. I think one of the issues the county board should consider is if you're obligating a future board to a decision you make today. So let's say you make a five-year commitment. What happens, and the next election happens, and that board says, huh, you know?
I guess it comes down to you make an agreement with someone, and it's integrity. You keep that agreement. I think that's important.
I, I, I don't think AOC is, I've talked to the interim director, you know, he doesn't really, he's fine either way. You know, if we want to take 10 years to pay it off or pay it off at once, he's like, as long as they know in their long-term structure, it's coming. And so they don't, you know, they're, they're fine with either decision that we want to make.
Commissioner Gold?
I.
Commissioner Boyce?
I'm informed that Curry County's not paying any interest, so.
Well, I like free money, stretch it out as long as we can. So do we have any, anything from Louise on this?
From a budgetary standpoint, and I was going to, this is tied in, I might also just, you know, Louise, you can come up here, but the next item on the agenda is AOC dues, and this ties into this. So the line item for the Bach Office for Dues, which includes AOC up to like $19,300 a year, LGPI $1,588 a year, ONC Counties' membership is $18,427.
Excuse me, could you say that again, that last part again, please?
ONC Counties, $18,427 for dues. So ONC is about the same price basically as AOC. And then NATCO, which is a national association of counties, is 450 bucks. So the Budget Committee budgeted $35,000 for the current year, 1819. Our costs currently for 1819 are $30,000.
Our costs currently for 1819 are $38,090. So we've already overspent that budget mostly because the, and this goes back to the, the ongoing problem. We have a fiscal year, they have a calendar year, and so we basically ended up paying our, basically, our 2018 budget, our 2018 dues for AOC, we paid them in July, which falls into this budget, and now we have another invoice for this, and Ms. Colstrom can expand on that. But we can go more into depth with this in the next item. I guess I'd like to, your question was about the numbers, Ms. Gold.
Always.
Yes, and so the question is, no matter what you do, whatever decision you make, you're probably going to have to make a supplemental budget, and what we'll, what we'll be looking for from the board at this point is saying, you know, develop a supplemental budget and come back for you to vote on. And in this case, for the, for the road fund, the direction I'd like to see from the board is, do you want to pay it off at once or over a five- or 10-year period?
I'd make a motion to pay it over 10 years since we're not paying any interest on it. I think it's a no-brainer in my-
Second.
Free money. Got it.
Any further discussion? Question?
Aye.
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 Okay, so staff will come back with a, after they advertise, come back with a supplemental budget, right?
Is that enough over the budget to warrant having a supplemental budget?
The next item, the next item's going to put you over the budget.
Oh, I see, okay.
Yes, Louise Colstrom, County Accountant, and that statement is correct. The county is already over budget by $3,000, and then this is 980, and we actually haven't paid our dues for 18, 2019, which will add another, depending on which dues you pay, another-
Some are up to $19,303, but it's more likely going to be like, I don't know, $17,000 or something like that. So that's the next agenda item.
So we're already on, like, say we're already on this agenda item. One of the problems is, is, is it, I went back over the history of the dues account, and what it looked like they were doing is, at one point, they were, they were taking the dues that were paid in January, and they were doing a prepaid for half of it. So every year you have half of one year and half of another year. In my experience, when you're paying dues for a year, you usually only have, you just, you don't bother with all that prepaid stuff. You just pay that year's due in that year, and that's for a full year. But it looked like in the past, somebody was concerned about that, so they started doing this half-year, half-year, half-year thing, and then they didn't. And one of the things that happened was at the end of, for the 2018 bill that was received in January of 2018, there was so much discussion about what was going to be paid off of that bill and what wasn't going to be paid off that bill, that it actually came down to that bill didn't get paid until July. So now we've got that bill in there. I've got another bill that's going to come in. So my two choices is, is the new bill that comes in, do I put 100% of it into this fiscal year, and in that case I need a supplemental budget for around $18,000 plus this $1,000 plus the $3,000 that's over, or do I continue this weird prepaid in the middle of a year type thing that usually we don't do that kind of thing? And in that case, I'll need another $8,500 plus that $1,000 plus the $3,000 that is over.
Bottom line, what we're looking at is-
Bottom line is, we're looking at a supplemental budget no matter what you guys do.
Okay, and I'm looking at this, at the voluntary dues versus the mandatory dues, and I think it's really important that we keep our membership simply for the insurance, if nothing else. Because there would be a savings of 5785 if we just did the mandatory parts of those dues.
Ms. Colstrom, if I could, would it be better for us and much cleaner for the county to pay that forward, because we're on a fiscal year and they're on a calendar year, that we pay that forward so that we don't have this problem again?
The easiest thing to do so that you don't get into this problem again of having two, basically two years paid in one year, is to just pay this bill, cover it with a supplemental budget, and then next January, pay that bill for that year. And that way you only have one year and one fiscal year, and it, it doesn't require all these journal entries and people remembering what they did the year before.
So another word to set it up now.
I hope you remind me of that when it's time, because I think that's the best way to go. Mr. Boyce?
Hey, thanks again. You know, I'm just looking at the categories here, the Federal Land Management Subcommittee, that's always 7:00 in the morning. I might let you inherit that at some point, because sometimes I leave here 2:00 in the morning to get there in time. But it is very important for Curry County especially, and the purse, you know, that's, that's not going anywhere right now, and that's a really, really tough issue. So yeah, that's all I have for now on that. Excuse me.
So can we have a motion?
I'd like to make a motion that we pay everything now, but on this amounts that they billed us, just pay the ones that are mandatory instead of voluntary. People can be part of the committee, just not vote on those committees.
We, we have been paying the Federal Land Management Subcommittee dues in addition to the-
Yeah, that's like an extra $4,000, $4,100.
Paying the first one, the second one, and then the federal one. That's the ones we have traditionally paid.
Thank you.
Do we have a second?
Second, Mr. Chair.
And could you re, your motion basis is just to-
You want me to reiterate my motion? My motion is that we pay both bills, but $13,518.48, which would just be the mandatory-
Just those top two, got it. Okay.
So you're not including the Federal Land Management?
No, because that's a huge amount. I realize that it's important, important, but certainly people can go to those meetings. It just would mean they wouldn't vote, so.
Well, you might guess I have a little bit of an adverse opinion to that, and then I-
That's why I was curious why you seconded my motion.
Well, I didn't know, I guess I didn't understand that you were taking that, that category out. Now I'm looking at veterans' dues, so no, I can't support that motion. Forgive me, Mr. Chair.
All right, so let me call, is there a second to the motion?
You withdrew the second.
He withdrew. Having no second, I withdraw the motion. I'd like to make a motion that we, that we do the three, the AOC General Fund, the Public Lands Fund, and the Federal Land Management. I think they're extremely important to this county right now, especially with all we have going on.
Boy, it's hard not to include veterans on that.
That's my, that's my motion. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Any further discussion? Call for the question?
Aye.
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 Okay, thank you. That will come back to you. We probably need to-
I can do it on the 16th. This one, because of the appropriation level in that non-departmental where these are paid out of, I don't need to do an advertised supplemental budget, so it will come back to you next week as a supplemental budget, as well as the four that I just advertised for next week.
Commissioner Boyce?
Just a quick comment on NAEC. Sometimes I get, just as an excuse to get on an airplane, and it's for $450, that's not a lot of money, but when you go through county college, you'll find some bigger county commissioners that will get information back to you, and it's very helpful and saves you the, the need to, it's a very good organization, but that's just one way to save a few dollars there.
Okay.
All right, next we have, through all the dues.
Okay, so this item here is, again, a discussion point where if you wanted to pay dues, it would actually be another addition to the supplemental budget, which would be for next week. So the, the Oregon Coastal Zone Management Association unites local governments and elected and appointed officials in the Oregon coast. Through OCZMA, local government officials advocate with collective voice on coastal policy, exchange ideas, and build new leadership skills, pursue transformational and cost-effective solutions, enrich the public's understanding of local governments, and exercise exemplary leadership. So in discussions with them, because I, you know, as a county administrator, I have gotten these notices, I've never gone to a meeting, but I did ask the question, are we members? And the county, the dues are currently $4,000, and we got that invoice in August, and we didn't pay it. We haven't paid dues since 2015, that was one year. We had a few years before that that we weren't members, and, but we had a whole string of years in the late 2000s where we were members every single year. And the dues used to be $10,000, they used to be more, and so in talking with the director, the OCZMA bylaws, membership is only ended when a resolution is passed by the organization. So we're not currently due-paying members, but we are more than welcome to attend the meetings. So this is one of those same issues that you were talking about with AOC. You're more than willing to attend the meetings, and you guys, you know, you know, if you want to be noticed on this, before I leave today, I will, you know, do an email so you know about the meetings, and, but if you want to be due-paying members, it's $4,000. And I, in the packet today, you've, you know, you were able to read their mission and what they've done and some of the, some of the history here, and there are, you know, you know, they, they do some good work, and if you want to pay the dues, you can. With that, it entertains a motion to say move to pay invoice for OCZMA, or move to direct staff to bring back a resolution withdrawing from OCMA, or you don't have to have a motion at all, you can just go to the meetings.
Commissioner Boyce?
Once again, thank you. I'd like to spend a little time with Representative David Brock Smith on this. He's very familiar with this, so I would prefer not to commit to paying dues today. However, I'm going to meet with Gary Melman tomorrow, everybody's Brookings City Administrator, and I was going to contact Lucy Labone, because I knew she had some significant experience with this. The only thing I would add to that, if, yes, if we continue this, the eight major issues that they are focused on that, that are important in Curry County, five of, five of those eight are, I think, critical to us, and that's land use, natural resources, fisheries, certainly economic development, and transportation, Highway 101. So yes, my, my preference would be to maybe not commit one way or the other on dues today, but I could bring back a report from those three people, and, and they may have some good direction and recommendations for us, Mr. Chair.
Why don't we bring this, hold on, I'm bringing this back for the 16th.
Okay.
That's fine. That's okay.
Thank you.
Okay, so, yeah, so the only question, I saw Colstrom raise her hand, the only issue is if we're going to, this is under the same line item as AOC, and if we're going to do a supplemental budget, it'd be beneficial and effective just to do it all at once and add another $4,000 to that. I'm assuming that's what you're going to say, Ms. Colstrom.
Commissioner Boyce, first?
Thank you. I do want to add, though, if we do get, you know, kind of affirmative recommendation from them, it's going to take one commissioner to really devote some time to this, and that means travel, that means contributing, that means asking tough questions, justifying that dues and expense. So I don't, I don't know that would be me or who that would be, but important, thank you.
Commissioner Gold?
I was just going to say, we are currently members, and we could move the payment till, say, next year.
Yep.
I, I would prefer doing that. I know when I was involved with the port, they were members, and this was a really important thing to be a member of because all those marine reserves things were coming in affecting the fishermen.
So the only other recommendation I might have for you, since you really haven't landed on it, you want a little more research, is we put it in the sup, we put it in a supplemental budget, and then you vote on it next week, yes or no? Code, just because we're putting, so we're going to notice a supplemental budget, put the $4,000 in there, next week you're going to get to vote, you're going to have to have a regular motion on your road fund and your AOC dues. I mean, I know you voted about that, but we're going to basically put that in the supplemental budget. You can take it out next week if you don't want to pay these dues, if you want further deliberations on this. But that way, if you do want to join, it would be done as far as the supplemental budget goes and notice.
So move, Mr. Chair. I think that's a good recommendation.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion?
I just like the idea that we're not absolutely tied into it.
Yep, you guys, yeah, so basically this gives you a week to kind of, you know, get your, no pun intended, ducks in a row, and figure out, do you want to pay that $4,000 or not, and pull it out next week if you don't.
Well, there could even be more than a week, because you could just pay it next year, so.
I'll bring back a report, Mr. Chair.
Call for the question?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, we have some announcements, meeting schedule, vacancies. Vacancies are the Ambulance Service Area Advisory Committee, that's a law enforcement position. Planning Commission, two members for South County, which terms, their terms will be expiring April 1st, 2021, and June 6th, 2022. Building Codes Appeals Board, an eight-member board. County Compensation Board, two members with terms expiring December 31st, 2019, and December 31st, 2021. Then we have January 16th, 2019, general meeting at 10:00 AM, Commissioners Hearing Room. January 21st, county offices will be closed for Martin Luther King Day, and February 6th of 2019, a general meeting at 10:00 AM in the Commissioners Hearing Room. Next we have County Administrator Updates. Administrator Schroeder?
Yeah, within your, I won't go over it, but in your packet today and online, there was a surveyor's report, I encourage you to, to review that. I have, I'll give a code enforcement update verbally, we don't normally put that online due to the sensitivity of the nature of that stuff, but I will start with basically saying, you know, shout out to the DA's office for a good job. There was a journalism professor at the University of Oregon told his class to request public records for the last five years for every district attorney's office in Oregon. State law says the DA has to respond to requests within five business days. Six counties, including Klamath, never even replied to the students. Hood River County District Attorney even ignored the follow emails asking why they hadn't done that, but Southern Oregon, Josephine Jackson, and Curry Counties all emailed back within five days. So good job for the DA and good job for the staff. I know that was one thing that has been, you know, kind of tightened up over the last six months is public records requests and the procedures and policies for the public to get information and receive information from them. Just as an update for that, for citizens, if you're going to be going to the Planning Department or the Building Department, you'll be following the same procedures for public records requests as any other department in the county does. So there'll be forms to fill out, and that form will basically be responded to in five days with the amount of money it would take to get this particular piece of information back. It's one way that we're, again, we're trying to capture dollars that, you know, from a fee base to increase revenue to the county, and basically making sure all the departments follow public records policies, and collecting of that dollars is one way that we can help support the county. I just wanted to say thank you for that. From code enforcement, we had 13 new cases that came on board in December, and they involved blocked access to driveways, illegal camping sanitation, posting of notices for dangerous buildings, draining and excavation without a permit, trash, more illegal camping, more illegal grading, abandoned buildings, unsafe, animal impound issue, another illegal grading, another illegal camping, and blocked access to property. We had 14 follow-up in progress checks on old cases. We had 14 follow-up and progress checks on old cases. And I will, you know, so, we have a, you know, we have a tracking sheet and it's large and has lots of information on it. We don't, this is not a public document because it has people that are filing complaints and we want to protect people's rights not to be outed by doing this. And, but I will say that it just exemplifies the fact that we have, you know, a part-time guy who's working 19 hours a week and we can't, we're not even scratching the surface of what needs to be done in this county. And I would really encourage you, as you go forward in your budget cycle this next spring, to, you know, double down on your efforts and hire a full-time code enforcement officer because it's definitely needed and we're taking on more responsibility also for abandoned vehicles, so we're working with the Sheriff's Department. Obviously, an abandoned vehicle is kind of a low priority for a deputy that's charged with lots of other things out there in the county to protect. It's not a high priority for that, so we're turning that over to code enforcement, so we basically have our code enforcement officer also have access to the databases to look up ownership and bins and licenses and stuff like that, so we're trying to help that. I was scheduling a meeting next week between basically planning and building and the sheriffs and code enforcement and administration because all these, you know, and public health, a lot of cases that we find in the county are, you know, they have so many compounding issues, they're not just usually one issue, there's a number of different issues. So, and we did have in our, in our solid waste committee this meeting, this morning actually, we also talked about DEQ maybe being more involved when we have sewage issues. We do have, one of the compounding issues when you have all this illegal camping is you have, you know, illegal sewage dumping, and that is an environmental issue, so not only from a county standpoint, is it a hazardous waste under our nuisance ordinances, it's also a DEQ violation. But ultimately, you need, you know, whatever you do, you need boots on the ground, and DEQ is no different than us, it's hard to get boots on the ground to come out and investigate one case. So, we want to make sure we're just coordinating, coordinating our efforts between the state agencies and the counties to do this. So, future agenda items, couple of things that I've sent out to the commission that maybe you want to consider. There was a road fund loan ordinance that came out last year, and I think it might be good for this board to review that at some point in the future, maybe have a workshop on that because I know there was some discussion concerning the flexibility and the allowability of this ordinance to build a loan money. I think it'd be good for this board to either concur with that ordinance and make sure that they're aligned with the requirements and the interest rates, the payback schedules, all those things that deal with that. Just my recommendation that you have a workshop so everybody can revisit that issue, and if you want to change that, you certainly could. The Flores Lake discussion, I don't know if the board wants to, I mean, if they want to do that in February or not, I mean, what kind of appetite do you guys have to continue down the road concerning, and I did send some information out from the last packet concerning the Flores Lake, the workshop and other information about that, is there an appetite to continue with this discussion of the Floral Lakes land swap, the 70 acres for the 30 acres on 101? Is there an appetite for that?
Commissioner Gold.
Personally, I think we should pursue it because we could get land that is actually usable through a land swap.
Okay. I will say at this point, I have a couple of meetings scheduled with some people up there that I'm going to be joining in the next couple of weeks, and I'd like to reserve my comments because I'm new here until that time.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's good, it's just, I didn't, like I stated last morning, it's not a real high priority right now, but maybe in February we can gain some momentum on that and.
Are you leaning, I guess his question is, are you leaning towards swapping? Okay.
All right.
That's a good way to characterize it.
Two or three are definitely yes and I'm a maybe.
Yeah, so, work with Council Huddle then, he'll probably be putting the agendas together, at least working with staff that put the agendas together, and I'll leave him the information to get the state involved with that, so he's aware of.
Perfect.
Of what that future holds. The other thing that I would like to add to your workshop, if the board is amenable, is from, one of the outcomes from the solid waste committee meeting this morning is CTR will be wanting to roll out recycling bins at individual homes in unincorporated areas. Correct me if I'm wrong there, Ms. Gold?
Yeah, there, plus Kate Ferrelli.
Yes. And, and they would like to have, they would like to talk to the board about that because evidently the board's going to have to take action about that, something has to change within a county ordinance or your licensing for them, I actually don't know why they have to have you approve it, but they do. And I think it'd be beneficial for the board to weigh in, to have that in a workshop setting so that when it comes back before you for a vote, it's just a consent item. So, with your permission, I'd like to put that on the 13th of February.
That's fine with me, I think it would be good to be educated.
All right. So, this is my last meeting, so that my last official greeting from the Office of Administration. I'll say, as new year begins, change comes with it. As an appointee to the Curry County, from the Curry County Board, my tenure with the county will end today when the ordinance creating the position of county administrators repealed by the new Board of Commissioners. Transition from one majority to another is a hallmark of American democracy, it's what makes America great. It's been my distinct pleasure to serve the citizens and staff of Curry County from this office, and I'm thankful to have met so many wonderful, hard-working employees, volunteers and supporters across the county. Public service is a calling and I hold up the employees of Curry County for their dedication to serve the public good. I want to thank all the people who have supported me and offered guidance during my tenure here. Moving forward, there clearly will be a need for citizen engagement to transition Curry County to a fiscally sustainable position. I would encourage everybody to work positively and cooperatively together to solve these long-term fiscal, economic and housing problems along with others and help your county flourish. As for me, I'll be transitioning to the next challenge. If I can be assistance, please don't hesitate to reach out to me, and I have my Gmail address here. If everything was perfect, we would never learn and grow. I wish you all the best.
Thank you for your service.
I'd thank you for your service as well, sir. I'd also like to say, I'd like to post that on our website for a while, so, that letter, so that anyone that would like to get in touch with you has your email address, I'd like to offer you that.
Yeah, I'll give that to JJ.
Commissioner Boyce.
Might be too late here, but Council Huddle, were we going to work on the travel ordinance today or where, I might have missed something there.
We think it's on the 16th, but I think you are a little too late for today.
To change the agenda.
Yep.
Okay.
But if, if I could, I think Administrator Schroder's comments are timely and I think it'd transition us into the next couple of items that we did have agenda amendments on that we were going to discuss that I was going to present.
Right. Before you start.
Go ahead, sure.
David Barnes, you wanted to comment on this, did you still want to have your comment or no? All right.
Well, if you wanted to, I guess you could do commissioner updates, is what Louise is saying, is on the agenda, then we can go to Kay, but.
I thought it was apropos for you to go ahead and step in at this time.
Okay, thank you. So, at your places and per the agenda amendments, we had what is an emergency ordinance to repeal, so it's an AGRS, emergency ordinance to repeal, ordinance 1701, thereby eliminating the position of county administrator, effective upon adoption. And just by way of background, with the ordinance procedure, the state statutes 203045 requires ordinance be adopted at two readings 13 days apart. Subsection four allows emergency ordinances to be adopted at a single reading by ordinance and title if it is unanimous vote. I'll read the ordinance and then I'll request a vote on this ordinance. The title of the ordinance is, "In the matter of an ordinance repealing Article 1, Division 17 of the Curry County Code, eliminating office and position of Curry County Administrator. The Board of Commissioners for Curry County ordains as follows. This ordinance shall be known as," again, a number to be provided, "an ordinance amending Curry County Code." And the findings are, current Article 1, Division 17 of the Curry County Code, ordinance number 17-01 is entitled, creating the office and position of Curry County Administrator, delegating duties and responsibilities to perform his/her job functions and declaring an emergency. Ordinance 1701 was a departure from historical practices in Curry County, it was not adopted by unanimous board. Since its adoption, the Board of Commissioners has a new composition that is opposed to the departure from historical county practices reflected in ordinance 1701. And a majority of the Board of Curry County Commissioners desires to repeal ordinance number 1701, thereby eliminating the position of county administrator and return to the historical practices and structure of governance that served Curry County in the past. And then the section three, Article 1, this is the repealer, Division 17 of Curry County Code concerning creating the office and position of county administrator is repealed in its entirety, effective upon adoption. And then this has an emergency clause, the Board of Commissioners for the County of Curry deems this ordinance necessary for the immediate preservation and protection of the public peace, health, safety and general welfare for Curry County, and declares an emergency exists and this ordinance shall be in full force and effect on its passage. So, it's really up to the board, we've got an emergency ordinance. Now, even if an emergency ordinance is not unanimously adopted in a single reading and requires two readings, it's still effective on after the second reading 13 days from now, so it's really up to the board, is there a motion to adopt the ordinance eliminating or repealing ordinance 1701?
And I want to say, because we were directed an executive session last time, since that time, Mr. Schroder has had no opposition to this, so I would, I would hope that we can get a, get a, get a three vote on this so we can quickly move forward. So, I will make a motion to, to adopt, as Mr. Huddle has spoken.
Second, Mr. Chair.
Any further discussion?
I'd just like to be on the record as stating why I'm going to vote against this. In 2004, a citizens' task force was put together by the county with about, oh, 20 or 30 individuals and their number one priority was to get a county manager. Another reason I am voting against this is because it would be next to impossible to abide by the public meetings law with three commissioners running the county. Another reason I'm against this is because of the continuity issue. A lot of times commissioners coming and going, it's like a revolving door, and so there needs to be some continuity. Another reason I'm against it is because over 50% of the general law counties have administrators. We are a general law county, not a charter county, as was stated previously, so those are going to be my reasons for voting no on this issue.
And I want to say that I ran on the premise that we would not have a county administrator. This county's been very successful for decades without one. Julie Schmelzer was here as a, as a.
Director.
As a Director of Operations for the county, and I felt she was very extremely successful with her position, and I've actually spoken with her many times about the possibility of her coming back. I do, I do agree that we need some sort of a conduit between the commissioners and the different departments. However, I don't think giving all authority to an administrator is a proper way to run a county, and that's just my opinion. Commissioner Boyce?
Thank you, if we could have this discussion now, I think it might be helpful, might be a benefit to Commissioner Gold if we were to consider, and I certainly am, bringing back the Director of Administration, Economic Development, Curry Community Development. The difference is, the authority structure, the organizational chart that we're all pretty familiar with, and I think that is, as far as the portion of the county, and that is not an insignificant number, that want somebody to work with an administrator. I once told, because you and, this is no negative, but because you and Commissioner Huxley were part-time, I challenged Mr. Schroder, I said, we need two of you and two of me. And so, having three, as you have committed to full-time commission efforts, you have certainly expressed that for months, having a Director of Administration, I don't know if that, I'm not speaking for the board here, if that would be the title that would remain, but that person could be very beneficial, and I do have a person in mind, and I hope to, I hope to make some progress on the down the road, but that person will not be a county administrator, will not usurp my authority or your authority, I believe you've stated that on many occasions. And so, Commissioner Gold, knowing that, this would speed things up for us for about a week and we could put that out for application, or we could just revert back, I think it's been explained to me legally that we can go back to that position, and I think, I think it's a position you could get behind and strongly support.
Well, it sounds to me like you've got a person chosen already, is that correct?
Well, I, personally, I do, yeah, personally, I do.
Okay, and it sounded like Commissioner Pash also has someone chosen?
Well, again, I have spoken with Julie Schmelzer about this, she was the previous Director of Operations here. I actually was surprised when she was let go. I thought she was doing a fantastic job, since she's been in Josephine County, there are rave reviews about her job that she's performed in that county, and I've got commissioners calling saying, please don't take Julie, she's great. Her resume speaks for itself, she is, it's impeccable, and she, I have had conversations with her and she would be willing to come back to the county in the right position and, if offered, and she could come back really quickly, she would be willing to do that.
I think you're saying she loves Curry County and she would take quite a pay cut in order to do that, which obviously I appreciate. I also thank you for recommending, for referencing the other commissioners, you know, that I've gotten to know very well, and if this happens, yeah, they'd give me and you both a bad time, and I hope it happens, I hope we can, we're able to follow through. And again, Commissioner Gold, I think you would be, will be, if this takes place, will be. And one other thing, before we got here, she left, was, I don't know what word to describe other than incredibly unfortunate, unnecessary, I almost want to say tragic, that might be an overstatement, but yeah, Joe County grabbed her up just like that, so the fact that she, if we can come to terms with her, I'm incredibly optimistic that it will solve. Her background, as Commissioner Pash said, in economic development, her background here with Curry County, expertise, her simple people skills cannot, cannot be overstated.
Commissioner Gold?
I would say we're kind of putting the cart before the horse, simply because when you're hiring someone, I'm going to defer to Council Huddle, don't we have to go through certain.
Oh, advertising.
Advertising and all of that, and with someone having it as a shoe-in, that.
Our personnel regs allow us to, I think, hire someone without advertising, for instance, if we're transferring from department or rehiring a former employee, I'll have to confirm that, but I'm pretty close to sure that's the rule. So, we can rehire former employees without doing advertising and we can hire someone from one department to another without publicly advertising, I'll double check, but I'm pretty sure that's the rule.
Yeah, I was just getting a little uncomfortable with the discussion, I have nothing against the woman.
I, I think if I'm understanding what's happening correctly, you're being urged to change your vote from a, from a no to a yes so that this emergency ordinance can be adopted in a single meeting so that the two other commissioners can move on with the changes. Technically, this would not be effective until the second reading and if you vote no, and therefore, you know, we, even though, because Schroder's separation agreement is premised on a vote to eliminate the position, and that would definitely occur today regardless of whether it needed a first or a second, or a second reading. So, Schroder's separation agreement would be effective today, but the emergency ordinance to repeal would not be effective until the second reading in the event you vote no. So, what I'm getting is they're trying to explain the person coming in for the Director of, it's the same prior job we used to have, the Director of Administration slash Economic Development Director, but it did. Development Director, but it didn't have all the powers and authorities that Commissioner Boyce and Pash have talked about that are, as you remember, seventeen oh one was a broad delegation of powers to a single individual. And what I understand is, and as said in the ordinance, is a desire to go back to the prior form of governance with the Director of Administration slash Economic Development Director, a person who would put the agendas together, work on projects, those kind of things, but not have all the powers of county administrator. I think what they're trying to explain to you is there'd be a reasonable alternative to this, so that, that you'd be delaying that by voting no, but again, it's your vote, and I think they just want you on to, I'm, I'm not trying to put words in their mouth, but yeah, we're not making a decision on hiring anyone else right now. This is only to eliminate the, this is only to repeal an ordinance.
And it's basically, it's basically to expedite things. I mean, again, things are gonna happen. It's a matter of if they happen now, or if they happen, you know, in two weeks from now, you've already voiced every, you know, your concerns against it, and, and that is duly noted. I'm just asking you to, offering you an olive branch to, to, to change your vote, and, and we'll go from there.
You know, this, this goes right into what I was going to talk about in my Commissioner's report. I realize I'm outvoted. That's fine. And I realize that it's important to work together, and I will do that, whatever the decision is made, because that's what a functional board does.
Absolutely.
A dysfunctional board, if someone's outvoted, will go out and cause all kinds of problems.
And I appreciate that.
Go out and cause all kinds of problems?
No, I'm not...
She didn't mention you, and I'm...
I'm not being specific or pointing fingers. What I'm saying is, I will support whatever decision is made.
Thank you. Commissioner Boyce?
Well, thank you again, and, and I think this is very productive, so I appreciate that you're willing, Mr. Chair, to take the time, and I, I, I really believe it's a way to bring the community together, the county together, or at least it has that potential, not just this particular hire, if that's the route we go, but getting to know the other Commission Boards, and you will as well. All, all three of us have that opportunity, and I give it a tremendous recommendation. None of the other counties in our district have a county administrator, but what they do have are exceptional staff that are equally, Commissioner Gold, equally loyal to all the Commissioners. With the integrity that Julie Schmelzer have, again, if that's the route we go, there's no question in my mind that she would have equal allegiance to you and answering your questions and supporting you and doing her due diligence and duty for this county. I, I didn't say, no, I didn't say you...
No, I really have nothing against Julie Schmelzer.
No, I've...
I've never really worked with her or had anything to do with her, so...
Yeah, I think, I think we're...
That has nothing to do with this discussion.
Right, we're, we're currently just considering emergency ordinance to repeal ordinance seventeen oh one. It can be effective today if we have unanimous vote. If not, it needs to come back for a second reading.
So, I'd like to call, uh, ask for, for a motion. I don't know.
I think we had the motion, but I can't remember. JJ, did we have a motion to adopt this? There was a motion.
Motion by Commissioner Chairman Pash, seconded by Commissioner Vice Chair Boyce to adopt the ordinance to repeal seventeen oh one.
Any further discussion?
Thank you.
Thirteen minutes.
A question?
Aye.
Aye?
I'm gonna have to say no. That's okay.
So, that...
But I will support whatever happens.
It's not effective today. We'll need another reading, and we'll bring it back. And it says at least thirteen days apart, so we've got, um, yep, a little more time.
Alright, we've got seven minutes left.
If I could, I have one other item then, and this is in order approving a separation agreement with county administrator with signature authority to the Chair. And we voted to repeal ordinance seventeen oh one. The county administrator desire, and the county desire to enter into a separation agreement with mutual release and mutual non-disparagement, and therefore then, the county Commissioners, that the separation agreement with county administrator is approved with signature authority to the Chair. And so, I'm seeking a motion to approve that.
I make a motion to approve the separation agreement.
Are we gonna have any comments, Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Just non-disparagement?
I understand.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? Or comments?
Thank you. I'm in strong opposition to this agreement, but I second it because I wanna abide by it, and I wanna move forward. Turn the page. Try and figure out regrouping and not waste any more time. So, I will, I will abide by this agreement, personally and professionally.
Any further discussion? A question? Aye?
Aye.
No.
Alright, we have five minutes left before lunch. Do we wanna take our lunch now and...
Is there any further business?
Well, we've got Commissioner Updates, and then we've got comment, um, for the good of the order?
I need like two minutes, three minutes maybe?
I don't have any comments, so do you have any more comments?
Yeah, I have a few comments. It'll be short, sweet, and to the point.
Okay, Commissioner Gold?
As usual. Uh, I got a piece of information from Beth Barker Hildago, and she wanted this read in. I'm not gonna read the whole thing, but she wanted to talk about a survey from the Oregon Food Bank Network, and I'm just gonna give you a quick update here. Sixty-nine percent of all households accessing food pantries are one hundred percent or below the federal poverty, poverty level. With added food from the pantry, seventy-nine percent of survey takers meet their household food needs for the month. Twenty-nine percent of survey respondents only access an emergency food bank one to three times a year, while forty-three percent of the respondents indicated that they came to a food pantry ten or more times in the last twelve months. Okay, I, I'm just going to stop at that. If JJ wants to put this on the website, I would appreciate that. Also, I attended quite a long meeting yesterday that was talking about boards and functional boards, and I just wanted to give a little bit of what happened there, as far as what are functional boards, and I'm just gonna give you some highlights here. One of the big things of a functional board is if there is a vote that is, doesn't agree with everybody else, the board should be unified in supporting this decision, and I vow that I will do this once the decision is made. Also, it's important that we have diversity of opinions. Also, the board needs to be willing to abide by its own rules, policies, and code of ethical contact, conduct. Also, respect for the confidentiality requirement of a board meeting in executive sessions is important, and an effort to foster unity, harmony, and open communications with the board. And bottom line, integrity is right at the top of everything. And one other thing, I attended trash meeting today. I call it trash, but there's been a big push for people in the unincorporated areas to be able to recycle. So, they're going to be getting this up and running within the next two months, which is very, very good. And our county is doing very well in the, the amount of contamination that is in the recycle bins. We're at one point five percent. The average rate is fifteen percent. So, I think that's amazing. Right now, it's just available in the cities. So, it's gonna go into the unincorporated areas soon, which I think is exciting, plus Cape Fearlo, my area. Thank you, that's it.
Commissioner Boyce?
So, four minutes, five minutes, okay?
Uh, well, we're gonna run against the time constraints, so...
What would you like me to do?
As brief as you can be, sir.
Oh, that rings a bell. Okay, here we go. On the screen, I have the Excel sheet that shows every dime spent on county travel, both personally and through the county budget for the full two years. It will be on my website, my portion of the county website, my apologies. State of the County presentation, I'm gonna do that subject to the Board's approval on the sixteenth. Loyal opposition to Commissioner Gold's January second presentation, nicely done, by the way. Update, I'll be in Brookings, on Brookings Radio for a half hour tomorrow at one thirty, if anybody wants to send in booze or even has questions with Steve Braun, and meeting with Gary Millman. Then I have a group I'm meeting in Brookings with healthcare issues, and then that afternoon, I'll be meeting with Curry Community Health Executive Director Ken Dukey on recruiting healthcare providers for, for Curry County. I'm hoping that the Board can take an active, at least supportive role in that. And then early Monday morning, I'm going to the AOC Legislative Days. I mentioned leaving at seven. You know, I'll probably come back that night. I don't, I'll stay. Presently, and, oh, what, did I miss there? On the sixteenth, I'm gonna give liaison recommendations to the Board. It'd just be a rough outline. And right now, I'm serving on eight boards, and they are, and they're all important, especially AOC-C. It's not poor me or look at me, but they are just very important to this county. One is Curry Community Health, who's Curry Douglas Business Development. I see, I just got an email from Susan Morgan Natural Resources. Travel Southern Oregon, Southern Oregon Workers Investment. This is really important. We go to Kokea once a month, Southwest Area Commission on Transportation, Curry Wildfire Prevention. That's been inactive for the last couple of months, but we moved closer to fire season. I know you've had a lot of interest and contribution in that as well. So, now, again, you're both full-time and, and prepared. It will require a lot of work, a lot of commitment, and I, I'm confident...
Can I make one correction? I think I'm doing the transportation now.
Southwest Oregon?
Oh, not southwest.
Yeah.
I take that back, Curry County.
That's okay, that's okay. Whichever one you're on is important too.
No, that's fine. That's, I just wanted to make sure the record was straight.
But you'll, you'll learn, as it took me a while, how important these, these boards are to this county, whether it's in Curry County, travel, or outside the county. I try and really monitor that well and be very precise on where I go and what I spend, and that's never changed. The only other thing I have, oh, this travel's gonna require some early mornings and late night for both of you, and I think you're both capable and, and fully capable and, and committed on that. Evening meetings. I'm hoping that at some point, we can, we can consider, I'd like to do the third Wednesday in either Brookings or Port Orford, every month, five thirty to eight o'clock, and maybe even the twenty-third of Port Orford. That might, I won't ask for a commitment on that today, but I, I think that is, the better we are able to learn every aspect, every region, every city, community of our county, the better we can serve, the better opportunities we have to unite this county and face these issues that we are, we are faced with. The Curry Fleet Policy, I'll have, is probably gonna be the twenty-third, but we have sixteen vehicles sitting idle that barely get used. Of course, I'm prohibited from using any of them right now. Anyway, with Enterprise Auto, Mr. Ryan Alford, just about done, Mr. Chair. Curry Building Fee Increases, I wanna repeal that at least a minute from the December nineteenth meeting. We had twenty percent fee increases, so I'll be bringing that to the Board. Jim Ailey on the sixteenth, Pacific Gills, is agreed to come just give a quick, quick update on his progress. CEO of, yes, Pacific Gills Golf Course. Last one, I'm also, I don't know if I can get it done by the sixteenth, certainly the twenty-third, a Curry Financial, Natural Resource and Curry Problems Issue Consultant, Sid Lichen from Lane County. He was a four-term Commissioner there, two-term, I'm sorry, eight years prior to that.
Is that Sid Lichen?
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thought you said Ed.
Uh, yeah, Sid Lichen, but prior to that, he was mayor of Springfield for ten years. He would work two full days per week for six months, and he would help us come up with a five-year plan. He's already looking into our budget, so I hope I have a specific or official proposal that I can give you in the neck, before the end of January. I could not possibly recommend his expertise higher, the respect he has around the state, the contacts he has around the state, and he was just a...
Has he done this for other counties?
He's looking actually at Klamath County. They, I got to him first...
Well, he's never actually done this, or he's starting a consulting business?
Uh, I don't know if he has an official consulting business, but he loves Curry County and would love to see if, if we could put him to work for our best interest, and so that's, that's what I'm gonna be making a proposal on, and yeah, I have very high hopes that we, we might go that direction, and I, I think it, yeah, that's all I have. Thank you.
Did you have anything else, Louise, you wanted to say? Okay. I need, I need to just let everyone know that I am going to be attending the AOC meetings. I'm going to be using the grant. AOC's agreed to accept it, that we have. Former Administrator Schroeder was, was to also use that, so we're gonna be able to use that. As far as the travel up there, I'll bring my own personal vehicle up there because we don't have a travel policy yet, and I'm not sure if the grant covers the hotel. I think it does. If not, I would like to, at a later date, submit that back to the county.
Thank you. And so, what it sounds like, you're requesting to be able to get approved, the travel to the AOC conference in the next couple of weeks while we work out the travel policy?
I think that was already approved.
Okay, good. Thanks. And then the only other thing I would say is, we approved a separation agreement with Schroeder. Today's his last day. We will not be able to have the administrative position effectively ended until the next reading. If you don't have any opposition, you could appoint me the acting interim until we get the thing taken care of, and that's just only, it's just a matter of...
That's why you get the big bucks.
Okay, well, otherwise, we're in a...
Thank you very much.
We're betwixt and between.
Absolutely.
Because it didn't work out that we got it done today. So, thank you very much.
Because lunch is on us, I'll make that motion that we appoint Council Huddle as the acting, acting interim county administrator.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion? Call for the question?
Aye.
No. No, yes, I'm just seeing if you were paying attention.
Alright. This meeting is adjourned.
Good meeting, Mr. Chair.
I'm, your, your vote is your vote, and that's why we have a democracy. We gotta start the healing here, and I hope everyone's willing to do that.
Oh, aye.